Good evening, everybody. And tonight, these candidates here are vying for your first preference vote in the Kiri Kiri Maori Ward for the Hamilton City Council. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. Okay, I'm hoping we can hear me now. Okay, so we'll get back into there. I think someone hit a mute here when they shouldn't have hit it in there. But yes, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's It's in the Ballot show here from the All Saints Community Church and our good old Kiri Kiriroa Hamilton home. And how are our candidates feeling tonight? Nervous? You can chime in, your mic's alive. I hope we've all got in there. So let's kick off with opening statements. And Horeana, you get to go first.
Kia rere te whanau ko Horeani Henderson toku ingoa. He'ore o Maniapoto, Rakaakete Tonga, Tufare tsoa, Tarunake, Kaipahu'a Kai. I grew up in Fairfield. My whanau, my husband and our three sons, we live in the Papanoi claudalins. We love our home. We know that everyone in our neighbourhood is connected. We want to serve our community. In 2022, I stood as a mayoral candidate. I came third after our elective mayor and then deputy mayor. I spoke three times in council in defence of the Maori ward. And when it was established, I stood as an east ward candidate in the hope that we might have one more Maori representative around that decision-making table. I love te tiriti and I know that a fiscally responsible council, their honours te tiriti will protect us all and will enhance the wellbeing and prosperity of all of us. We need to vote, whanau. We hiku, we protest, we need to vote too. Ko Horeani Henderson toku ingoa. I hope that you'll give me your number one vote. Wa Kiri Kiriroa Maori Ward.
Thank you. Danielle.
Tina tata katoa te wharenei me te ipu rangi hoki. Ko ayo ko Danielle Marks toku ingoa. Hemoko pona'o o te arua tai noe tufare toa fiji tonga hoki. He takatapuaiaho, he rangatahi'aho. Kia ora. My name is Danielle Marks. I'm really excited to be a fresh voice on our Hamilton City Council. I have the experience of working in local government as a rangatahi representative and also working towards iwi aspirations. Working at Waikato Regional Council, Rosarua Lakes Council and with the Living Wage Movement, they have given me the opportunities to understand the way that local government works and how we can actually create change that sees our people who are directly affected come to the forefront of the decisions being made. Our aspirations for rangatahi must include rangatahi. We have been neglected in the city and have yet to be heard in a way that has actual true meaning and impact. These things are all possible when you have the political will to do so, and I definitely have that. That is why you should rank me number one for this by-election. Vote Marks, number one, this time, this year.
Okay, next up, Maria. No, no, that's not on my sheet.
You're gonna skip? Okay.
It's not a skipping thing. I have a random order sheet. We don't do left to right here at It's in the Ballot. We throw everything in all sorts of weird directions.
Tu tawa mai runga, tu tawa mai raro, tu tawa mai roto, tu tawa mai waho. Kia tauai te māori tu, te māori oraki te katau. He tika kia tuku ngā fakamoi miti kia ratau ma. Kia fakapaa i te hua te rangi ki te hua te venua me te fakatau. I te ti, i te ta, kua taimai kirotu i te whare karakia o hato anaru. Waihoki kaioa e ma taki taki mai ana. Ko toku ingoa ko Maria te aukaha huata. Hemoko puna'aia no nga te kahungenu, no nga te iapukura Waikato Maniapoto, nga te porau me nga te fakau'e. Welcome, everybody, into our whare of St Andrews. And it's only right that we send our blessings to those that are looking after us up there in this time of Matariki. I'd also like to mohit to everyone that's in the whare at the moment and also to our crew of It's in the Ballot for putting on this event. And most importantly, my fellow Ma'raikura that are here holding the line and holding the space and giving it their all wherever and whenever they can. I am standing as a candidate for Kiri Kiriroa. And is that a button? One one-minute buzz? Okay, there's three main kopapa that I'm here for. Tuatahiake, he kai, he wa'i, he a'huromo'wai. Food, shelter and clean water for all. What brings me here is my whanau, is my ancestors and my love for H-Town Kiri Kiriroa. Atena kaio.
And while we're back on the random list, Donna.
Atena kaio katoa nami ihi nui kia kaio e hui hui mai nei. I'd just like to totoku the koriro that's been shared tonight. And it's amazing to see all our Ma'raikura out here. We could actually be at home with our mukupuna and our tamareki, but no, we're here tonight. And I think that's really important, that if you vote somebody on, they're gonna show up. They're gonna show up for you. And what I can say is I've always shown up. I've been showing up for the last 30 years. I've been in and out of councils, doing submissions. I've been challenging central government because there's central as well as local government. We can't forget what's happening at central government level. We've been fighting for our Maori wards. And if we don't, if we don't come out in force with this by-election, we could lose it. So whanau, I really wanna push and say, get your whanau out there. Go and get your kazi, go and get your auntie, go and get your uncle, go and get your nana and your koriro. Help them out, help them to fill out the ballot forms and then go to the post office. Because if we don't use it, we're gonna lose it. And I've got so much more to say. And I'm looking forward to our koriro tonight. Kia ora.
Okay, and Marion.
E aku matua, e aku tupana, e aku karangamaha. Kia rahu'i mai tatoa i te naipou. Ko meiriri toku ingoa. He'oreiaho no Waikato tuhui me Raka'ahu'iki. The three priorities that I'm standing for to hold the council responsible for upholding its te tiriti obligations, including fighting hard to keep our Maori wards. Secondly, it's to improve access options for our whanau in terms of safe and affordable housing. And thirdly, to empower our collective Maori capability to really step into our greatness as Maori in the manner we already hold and to lean in together during this particular season of change that we're currently transitioning through. So one of the things and the reasons that I'm standing like all of our Ma'raikura here is our love for our people. And also because I see the Maori ward role as an opportunity to make a difference for our people as well and to be a voice inside of council. I've worked in iwi Maori for a long time. So have experience working with councils at the governance, policy and strategy level. But also have built a lot of relationships. And there's a time to fight, but there's also a time to build relationships as well. I think that's critical in terms of what we're facing around Maori wards. We need the whole of Kiri Kiriroa to vote for our Maori wards. So, Kia ora.
Thank you for that. Okay, let's get to the fun part of opening the boxes. And I've got a lovely questionos here. Tamareki, thank you for filling in at the last minute. It's been, as I can describe, skeleton crew, skeleton everything. I thought that could be the theme we could say with the show is it's skeletons, skeletons, skeletons.
Make it work.
Yeah, so wanna check, all the boxes are sealed?
Yes.
Okay, so let's kick off. Marion, you get to choose the first box number.
I'm gonna pick lucky number 13.
Bear with me while I open them.
That's all right.
Cool, that's why we have a chair.
So all right, the fun part is now we find out what box number it is. God, that's jinxed it on the number, number five.
So the question number we have is G for goats. Let me know when I'm good. Sweet, so, well, initiatives like Pataka Kai can't eradicate poverty. They do provide for the community. Should these and other grassroots initiatives receive council funding? What other initiatives would you put forward?
So the short answer to that is yes. So yes, I do think that we should support it. We've got a cost of living crisis on our hands at the moment. So these particular kopapa help to support whanau who may be experiencing those challenges. And I think more of those initiatives than really any initiative that supports whanau wellbeing, a community wellbeing, economic resilience and also cultural revitalisation. So really supporting Manafinua initiatives and Matawaka initiatives as well that contribute to that as well.
Okay, we have a button from Maria.
Kia ora, I thought I'd use my button card nice and early because this is one of the things that I'm also campaigning for is kai food for all. So some of the actual initiatives on the ground that I'd like to see be inputted into our city of Kiri Kiriroa, H-Town, is educating people about growing their own māra in the city. I've lived in three different suburbs across Kiri Kiriroa. And before I met my husband, I knew nothing about growing a garden. All you need is a small piece of grass. And literally, we've lived in Melville, in Pamela Place. We grew all sorts of different kai there. We lived in Chatwell, we grew kai there. And now we live in the city behind the stadium and we also grow kai there. So education that way, educating our whanau to be able to know that they can as long as they've got a little piece of grass. And if they don't, they don't, then turning to those initiatives within that city like community gardens. Also, kai collection. Kai collection, you see arako laid in with fruit that is not being used, especially in this time of winter with the different seasons. So making our kai, making something out of that and giving it back to the community and teaching tikanga like preserving and rongoa as well.
That sounds so exciting. Danielle, what box number?
That was rude because 13 was my number when I played basketball. That was gonna be my first choice, so I'll go with 19.
Now, what's good and special about number 19? Is it your letter box number?
It's my birth date.
In the same context, mine would be 22, so I know what you mean.
And we have a question letter T for teeth?
Yeah, that works.
Sweet. Are you prepared to support unpopular but necessary levels of rate increases in order to ensure the financial viability of council? Instead of voting for lower rate increases in the interests of your own reelection prospects at the expense of future councils being able to fund infrastructure maintenance or infrastructure maintenance and upgrades?
Long question, short answer, yes. I was in favour for increasing rates because our councils have historically under-resourced a lot of our infrastructure. And now we're seeing a lot of, with climate change happening, we're seeing a lot of our infrastructure being degraded. And we still don't have the money to better protect and future-proof our communities. So yes, I think the people that would elect me would be, yeah, in favour of being, I guess, rubbering status quo.
Okay, we have button from Donna.
Kia ora, ano. For me, this is a really good question because rates have different layers and you have a uniform rate. So for me, getting rid of the uniform rate to put more putia in our whanau. So, you know, coming from Norton, been there for over 20 years, there's a $500 uniform rate which goes across whether you come from the wealthier side of town or the poorer side of town. And if we can look at putting that uniform rate back into people's pockets, that will go a long way to dealing with some of the issues that these communities have. And I wanna say that because rates pay for a lot of the upkeep, new footpaths, new roads, parks. And what we've seen in Norton is our roads and footpaths haven't been upgraded in the same way that other wealthier communities have. That rates are fair and that if we take away the uniform rates, there's more money in the pocket for our whanau.
Go, yeah, go ahead, yep.
As a 2022 mayoral candidate, I campaigned against the $36 million walk cycle bridge due to it being fiscally irresponsible, non-essential and at a gold standard. I'm glad to see that it was taken off council's books and its funds reallocated to critical infrastructure. But why did it take so long? That our current council was prioritising a gold standard, non-essential over critical is why we're now paying $150,000 a day on interest only and have 100% rates increase over the next five years. If I'd been on council earlier, I would have been opposing gold standard and non-essentials and pushing for fiscal prudence and prioritising critical infrastructure.
Now, just wanna point a clarification. When you said uniform rate, Donna, that is basically the base rate. Yep, so yeah, it's a base rate. So basically, yeah, yeah, which from what I know is usually every property would pay, say, a fixed charge on, for the sewerage, a fixed charge on waters and then you pay.
There are different layers of rates. And what I'm saying is to get rid of the uniform rate for the poorest communities. What I'm saying is get rid of the uniform rate for our poorer communities and invest more in those communities. Like I say, footpaths, riding, parks. I mean, we've seen our park being demolished. And so where are our tamareki gonna play when you just start demolishing our parks and you build these swanky multimillion dollar parks in the wealthier suburbs? So I've been fighting this for many, many years, for equity actually in our rates because we all pay rates. And whether you're renting or paying rates, you're still paying rates. So to start with, I'd like to have the debate around the uniform rate that everyone has to pay.
God, 2025 is gonna be a very interesting year. Maria, what box number?
Let's go for the number of children that I have. Wadu, eight.
I'd love to know your secrets on cooking for big numbers. I did that for the taranga, when we were doing the taranga elections. I did the breakfast. So I know the feeling of trying to cook for six people, but you could probably tell me how to stretch it from six to eight.
I bet you that we could all tell you as Maori how to make $20 stretch to 20 people.
We have question letter A for afe. So what is your perspective on fluoridation of Hamilton's water?
Why is something also I'm passionate about and one of the things I'm really pushing? Should I get into council? The problem is not about the fluoride. The problem is that we don't have clean, fresh water. So we're forced to fluoridate our water to at least get it to some kind of standard that we can use it and drink it. But it's not ideal. In an ideal world, we would have a clean river, a clean awa. We would not need to put fluoride in it.
Okay, Donna, what box number?
Just random number there.
Oh, that's all right. I mean, you know, if you can't get your number ones, don't you wanna get the second preference vote?
And we have a question letter Q for queen. Would you have supported, would you have supported the 16.5 rate increase that was recently accepted in the long-term plan?
No, in short.
Okay, Horeana.
Can I please have 25?
Oh, yes, the good old age when your insurance excess drops on car insurance. I know. It's quite good, actually.
And we have question letter W for weather. What alternative revenue streams can you suggest that council explore to avoid raising rates by an even higher amount?
So yeah, council was a bit quick to waive the DC's developer contributions. For example, there was 100% remission on six-story buildings in the CBD. And so when our debt levels are really high, then we need to be looking at at the developers paying their contribution to our city coffers.
Okay, that was quick, easy. Sorry, technical talk that happened in the background, so I missed the whole answer myself. But that's all good. Maria, what box number since getting the next round?
21.
Got me thinking there.
And we have question letter J for Joey. Should the Hamilton City Council remain part of the LGNZ Local Government New Zealand Collective?
Absolutely anything and everything that we do in our lives is about connections. It's about relationships, it's about networking. So it serves us to be a part of those wider groups and bodies where we can lean on, also offer advice and take examples from what other local governments are doing throughout the mautu.
Okay, next up, Marion, what box number?
Number seven, please.
And it's question letter AB, like the all blacks, I guess. What steps will you take to make sure our local government is transparent and accountable?
I'm gonna defer that. I'm gonna defer it to Horeana.
Do I need to put my card up?
Oh, I think we kind of got the message on that one.
It's all about koriro, right? So the people clearly with our 3,000 submissions to council, the people wanna talk to council, but they need to be heard. So everybody, time is precious, so council needs to really value our time. But getting out into the community, we had the opportunity to go to Hokonui Marae and meet with our whanau there. Ngamehika a katoa katua, nga te wadi de. And to our other whanau at different places, awa'awa and different places like that. All our whanau want to have koriro with council. Council needs to be coming to them, not always expecting them to come to council.
Okay, and Horeana, what box number?
What? Is it a trick one?
And we have a question letter B for Bravo.
Oh, that's definitely with the phonetic alphabet.
Might be the only one. How do you propose to improve engagement and participation with the council in non-online spaces?
Yeah, so I just said, taking council to the people and listening to the people, valuing, respecting their time and then making sure that what we hear from the people is what we're talking about at council.
Okay, and we have a button from Donna.
I think this is a great question because, like I said, I've been living in Norton for over 20 years, over in Norrie Street for about 10 or so years. And how you get our community engaged is you invest in our community. If you don't invest in our community, then it's saying that council is ignoring our community. And like I mentioned before, roads, parks, it's not just that, it's the resources being shared out. So I think it's a great question. And start investing in our community, you might see more engagement. Kia ora.
And while keeping your mic there, what box number, Donna?
Okay, 20, please.
Oh, yes, the drinking age until when was it, the mid 90s? It's all right, when grandma first voted in 1949, the voting age was still 21.
I remember that age as a university student and waiting for that age. And then they lowered it to 18.
And we have question letter E for Elephant. Do you support income limits for council staff? Do you support a starting income that sits in line with the living wage?
I absolutely support the living wage. We had a transport company for over 15 years and we actually paid our staff more than we paid ourselves. Hon, I don't think you even got paid at all. But anyway, and we paid them a living wage. So it's so important. You lead by example, Kilda.
Danielle.
Speaking of basketball, I will throw it to 14, Troy Bolton's number. Who's Troy Bolton? Oh my gosh. I apologize to all Rangatahi listening to this. High School Musical and Breaking Free.
And we have question letter R for Right. What recent or future projects would you cancel to improve the council's financial situation? And what projects would you propose?
The thing that's top of mind at the moment, and especially because it's affecting a lot of my mates from uni, is the fact that we've had a bit of a staff cut that has happened, especially for our lower kaimahi and the advisor roles. And I think that it's really difficult to kind of say that cutting staff means that we're saving money when it's only about $11 per household, not even per individu in Kirikiriroa. So I think that was a bit of a decision that is negatively impacting our communities, especially when I think of our university friends who have just graduated, coming out of lockdowns and they try and get a job and they laid a really awesome job caring for our city and then their jobs are cut. So yeah, that's something that I've been keeping close and especially all around the Mautu, even nationally with all our kaimahi who are facing job cuts at the moment.
And just for those at home wanting to know, we've gone through 10 questions and I'm impressed with the speed. Okay, Donna, what box number? Oh, yes. I know that date's special to me. That was the day I was meant to be due on. Yes.
And we have question letter D for Dad. What is your response to Hamilton West MP and Minister for Conservation Tamaportaka's statement that saving every species from extinction is aspirational and that it would cost maybe trillions to do so?
Well, one of his colleagues also said that slums are a home for someone else. So I don't have a lot of respect for what's coming out of the government at the moment. I think they're a little bit out of touch in what's happening in the community. If we all put our kaiteaki portai on, you know, we would be the first ones to be there to protect our waterways, to protect our biodiversity. And my husband, who's from Tipuahau Waikato, all the paru-paru ends up down his way. And so once upon a time, he could drag for whitebait and get 30 a drag. And now he's lucky, or 15 years ago when he last dragged, he was lucky to get three. So that's an indicator that our awa tupuna isn't doing really well. So by taking that stance, it's not doing anything for Papatuani again, especially for our marae and for our people who live.
And we have button from Marion.
Yeah, so I support Donna's koorero. And I do agree with Minister Portaco on one point is that it is aspirational and it's morally imperative as well. So if we don't set those aspirations and what can happen and what has happened is that it's completely destructive on our taial. So we need to have really strong kaiteaki measures in place and biodiversity measures in place so that over time, we can make improvements, ensure that development is sustainable. But we absolutely, it has to be aspirational.
Okay, Danielle, what box number?
Oh, gosh, there's so many numbers. Is 24 still available?
Well, that is the last two numbers of the year.
It's Kobe Bryant's number.
Thank you, thank you. And we have question letter H for Haide. Is there a significant barrier between what the council does and how the average resident understands the function of council? If so, how would you improve the understanding and transparency of the council for residents?
Absolutely, there is a significant barrier. The reason I ended up with a politics degree was because I didn't know what I was meant to do with my vote in the local government and central government elections. And especially for someone like myself who is quite passionate about local government and having to have conversations every three years with Rangatahi about why our buses in Hamilton are actually operated by Waikasua Regional Council and not by Hamilton City Council. And Hamilton City Council only deals with the bus lanes and bus stops. I think the most important thing is about having people who are actually connected to their communities on council. So that when we have these issues that come up, and because decisions happen every day that we're not aware of, we need to make sure that these people who end up around the table actually get out to their communities, not relying on just our kaimahi at council, but actually being the face of council in our community. So I think, yeah, again, to reiterate kind of what Hurianna's already said about actually going out to our communities, not expecting them to come to council.
Certainly can relate to that being myself as part of the reason why the show got started was being the candidate who stood for council and half the people didn't know what they were on about. Now, we've got a button from Maria.
I feel morally we're all on the same page and what people out there in the community are actually looking for real solutions. So when we think about this, how do we get councils to engage, especially for our Rangatahi, especially for our underrepresented people who don't even care to vote because they think that their vote doesn't count? We need to start them young. We need to have the conversation at the tables, having kaia. We need to bring them along to these different kinds of things. We have Paige, we have my tamareki here as well. We need to start mentoring and socialising that. And if you don't have a mentor, find someone. Why not make it a part of the school curriculum? Why not have a mayor for the day or a councillor for the day, something like that, that we actually can bring tamareki? Not necessarily the ones that are doing good at school, the ones that probably need it the most, that never get to go on the school trips. That's what I would do on a real day-to-day basis.
Okay, buttoned again? Oh, sorry, yeah. Yes, you get to. Yeah, no, sorry. I was like, and then I realised, oh no, it was Danielle who was the one who was on there because I'm just looking at the name on the list because I've got Hurianna lined up for the next one as my, making sure I don't skip someone.
In terms of what I've found in my experience with engagement with our whanau is that we really need to simplify the language of council so that they... A lot of our whanau don't even know what... If I ask my baby, what's council? She wouldn't have a clue. And when you go out and then you engage with our whanau, they don't know either because we talk in a language that's really complicated and we just need to simplify it. That's like a big start that we could do. So when we actually talk to whanau about what council is and let them know, do you know it impacts every part of your life if you live here locally? But talk to them in terms of when you take your jug and fill it up with water from that tap to have a cup of tea, that council looks after that. Or flushing toilets and, you know, playing on those parks where your kids play rugby league or rugby or touch or whatever, you know, the council control that. So it's talking in simple but relatable language so that that's the biggest thing to connect. I think we'd have a greater turnout for voting because they can connect with it.
Yeah. And something I remember from being a kid, I knew what a mayor was. I didn't know what the hell a councillor was. And actually, when I first came to vote, I knew ESTV off the back of my hand, but I had no clue who to vote for beyond the mayor. I had no clue what the DHB was. I had no clue really what the community boards were, councils at large and ward councillors because of the election I was voting in. But I remember that was my first voting process because all I knew about was the mayor. And if you watch The Simpsons, it's Joe Quimby. If you watched Mask, there was another mayor. You know, you might have in the TV soaps, you might see a mayor, but you didn't really hear about, unless you watched Keeping Up With Appearances, you wouldn't know who a councillor was. And I don't know if I even watched Keeping Up With Appearances, Joe, through there. It's like, it's book, hey, the tea's silent. Yeah. Now, Hurianna, we're finally getting down to you. What box number?
Can I have 26, please?
And we have question letter N for Neighbour. How would you protect and enhance the many different diverse communities of Kirikiriroa, Hamilton, especially Takataupui, refugee and other marginalised communities?
Kia ora ete whanau. The Kirikiriroa Maori ward exists to bring our Maori voice to the decision-making table. While I have aroha for refugees and other disadvantaged communities, when, for example, 175 whanau are currently living in emergency housing, when mana finua ngati waidiri tell us that this by-election is the first time candidates have been to meet them at their marae, ensuring that these issues are addressed must be my first priority. Maori have proven with te tiriti and through the values of pakaponanga, manaki tanga, aroha, that we care about our diverse communities and whanau. And I don't see any of that changing and I want to demonstrate that if I'm elected to council.
And we've got a button from Danielle.
Yeah, this is a really great question, especially today at the Settlement Centre on Boundary Road, that they were initially going to have artwork that displayed Israeli artwork that wasn't actually commonised, Palestinian stuff. And I think our council needs to actually take a stand on issues like Palestine, like the many genocides happening all around the world at the moment because it's all interconnected. My Maori tongue is impacted by the atrocities that have been going on. And especially, I really want to bring to light in 2021, the council had a moment against the Rainbow Community where we had a turf group come and book the museum. To much of this approval of the Rainbow Community, we couldn't get them kicked out of that venue because it is against current council policy and they were more scared of a legal lawsuit happening than actually the safety of our trans and Takataupui whanau here. And while I do understand that Hurianna's answer was... We have an additional Maori like myself who are Takataupui, who are Takataupai kaha, who actually need to see themselves and feel safe in these communities. So yeah, just wanted to highlight those.
Okay, Marion, what box number?
I'll just go with what I say, 22.
So choosing my birthday.
Oh, there you go.
It's all right. And it was the actual Labor Day of 1990 as well.
And we have question letter L for Lima.
Another phonetic alphabet one.
Thank you. How do you promote Maori wards to residents or ratepayers who see it as a costly and disruptive exercise with little benefit?
I think it's really important for us to, well, if I was in council, for council to lean into its partnerships and its partnerships' partnerships as well. So doing joint comms strategies either with Iwi too, to provide education around the benefits of it. And two, being really smart about actually who would make the difference in terms of enrolling these views and to really being embracing of Maori wards as well as maybe it's some of our non-Maori organisations that would actually make the difference. I've been to te tiriti waananga, actually where they've been delivered by tangata tiriti, not Maori. It's been what's made the difference in actually enrolling them. So I think we just need to be really smart and definitely leverage those relationships as well as also make our, ensuring that we're a part of that education.
And we have a button from Donna.
Yes, I belong to New Zealand Outdoors and Freedom Party. I'm the co-leader there. And there are a number of reasons why I joined that party. They're very much kaiteaki, so they understand from a Maori worldview. Also, as a Maori leading that party, we have 24,000 members. And part of my role is to educate, inform and to bring on board allies. Because we cannot achieve what we need to achieve on our own. We have to bring along our allies. And I can say that I'm actually doing that as we speak. And there are a lot of questions that have been coming out of my party in regards to te tiriti. What they're grateful for is some people just don't know, plainly don't know. So it's the ability to sit down in a safe place and explain to them a Maori worldview from a Maori lens. I think that's important, Kilda.
Okay, we've got to you, Maria.
Okay, kafiria e au te te kaumaru'a for the name of the council in Kingitanga, number 12.
And we have question letter X for Xrahi.
Another phonetic alphabet.
I don't know any other words that start with X. Now I know two. How do you plan to address the issue of affordable housing for young people and young families?
It goes back to relationships and what is already happening out there. We have organisations like Te Roonanga or Kirikiriroa that have set up successful housing in partnership with external businesses without the help of council. We can't wait for council. If we all get on, if one of us gets on, then definitely we will hold them to account. So it's about that networking, connecting with people that already have plans in place, that have the aspirations, that have the shared vision to ensure that there is safe, affordable housing, not just for young people and not just for young people with families, alko matu'a, those that are disadvantaged, everybody.
And just for some of those things about phonetic alphabet, a good example is N for Mike, N for November. You can picture that on a radio that could go very, very wrong. So yeah, I'm used to it, but I did ATC cadets, so I kind of know all the phonetic alphabet. Plus, my dad does own two aeroplanes, little poor niece. So yeah, you can guess it runs in the family, the phonetic alphabet. So when I hear it, I know exactly what it is, which one is, oh, that's phonetic alphabet, but only the English one. I've not learnt any other country's phonetic alphabet. Now, Donna, what box number? Yeah, the first working day after a Christmas long weekend.
And we have question letter O for Open. In recent weeks, there have been code of conduct controversies in both Imvakaagul and Kirikiriroa, Hamilton. Specifics aside, should sitting councillors have the power to trigger a vote of no confidence in elected members that removes them from council for the rest of the term?
Ooh, that's a very tricky question. The concern I have is that they were voted on. That's the concern that I have. And politics is controversial, right? That's why we're here. Not everybody's going to agree with everybody else. And if he was voted on, I think he has the right, or that person has the right to stay there. So it's a difficult one. I believe, yes, that there are code of conduct. Behaviour does that impede with freedom of rights in regards to freedom of speech and all those issues. So if they've been voted on, they should stay on, Kilda, and let the public decide next time round.
Okay, Danielle, what box number?
23.
And we have question letter Y for Yellow. How do you plan to address climate change and environmental issues at the local level?
Great question. The largest source of emissions in Kirikiriroa is private transport. So obviously, if we can actually invest in having options for people, obviously, many people aren't able to move off using their cars for many reasons. But if we actually had safe and connected cycleways and walkways, then more people are more likely to do it. The reason why I'm scared of cycling is because I've been harassed going across Claudlin's Bridge on a scooter where I've had numerous motor car users yell at me, spit at me and all these other things that have impacted my ability to even have a choice. So I think that we really need to actually help people change modes of transport. And I also really am proud of the work that our community groups have been doing in the gullies with all the restoration that has been going on. Our gullies suck up all the bad juju in the universe. So if we can keep, you know, restoring our gullies, then we'd have a...
And just before we go on, this is my friend Tony, who provides us with our accommodation. You already come up here, accessible bus stops. Who is keen to get Tim Shebault's concrete mixer out and fill a grass berm between the footpath and the road? footpath and the road so that a wheelchair can actually go onto a bus? How many people would like to get all Hamilton bus stops made accessible, you know? Yeah, yeah, that's something I've noticed, whereas Wellington, it's about 99% are accessible bus stops. So for me, it's weird actually, you know, oh, there's an accessible bus stop, oh, there's an accessible bus stop, oh, there's an accessible bus stop. It's so weird.
Yeah, and I think that Jose talked about that earlier this year with the by-election for the general ward.
Yes.
And he talked about how council could make that a part of their maintenance and repair schedule so that at least there is, that is going to be happening, even if we don't just go around and get his concrete mixer.
And Tony's second nearest bus stop's the accessible one, but that's only recently put in, but the nearest one is still not accessible, you know? But I mean, that's, was it Fairview Downs? Just to put some context in there. Maria, what box number?
Ooh, I will let the lovely Matariki choose.
We've got a question letter K for Kaha. Do you support the 20-minute model for urban development? If not, why not? If you do, pick two centres or neighbourhoods to develop around this model and explain why those two.
I think that the 20-minute model is a superb idea. At this very moment, and I've been doing this since I was a teenager, it takes 45 minutes to walk from one suburb to the next, except for the new, more affluent suburbs like Rototuna and Flagstaff. Bus stops are within less than 10 minutes walking distance. And I'd just like to pick out another characteristic of our gullies that suck up the juju in the universe. Absolutely, we need to do gully restoration. We have a whole network of them in Kiri Kiri Rua. So why not develop a walkway along our gullies that we are going to restore, that we're going to plant native trees, that we're going to make sure that the water is clean and also provide quicker access to those different spaces? So the two suburbs that I would choose, who I know that have extensive gully networks, is Melville Glen View around Peacock's Road, as well as on the other side of the city, because you've got to be fair from the south to the east, which are the East Side and Hillcrest.
Okay, Marion, what box number?
Oh, Matariki back again.
At age, you have to be enrolled at school. Because you don't actually have to start at five.
I love your face.
Oh, yeah.
We have a question letter S for Stars. Would you make any changes or introduce new measures to the city council's funding model? I.e. a vacant lot tax, red light cameras or calculating funds based on assets or income levels as they do in Norway?
Yes, I would, but within reason too. If I think about what we're currently dealing with, with cost of living, we need to be really prudent around what types of measures that we do create around city council funding models as well. So vacant lot tax, be a little bit sceptical about that. If you think of Waikato Tainui, who own a lot of, or inherited through the redress mechanism, a lot of Crown land back. It's through no fault of their own that some of those properties do sit vacant. So I wouldn't want them to be disproportionately impacted negatively because of funding models like that. So I just, the short answer is yes. I think we just need to be really smart and considerate about the current environment we're in and that it's inclusive of the diverse needs of Maori.
Want to throw some ideas out there, how many bus lanes are there in Hamilton?
Not enough.
Not enough? Because I do know that, I worked out in Wellington, if they find one bus lane, one hour a day, they could net in $10 million a year from people breaking the rules, equivalent of a 2.5% breakage reduction. So there are some very interesting things in there, but I mean, you know, that was sort of there. But I do not suggest doing red light cameras and then changing the orange light to two seconds, like they do in the United States, because those intersections are known for having very high crash rates. Yeah. Horianna, what box number?
Kind of nine.
But you can do red light cameras as a local council. You can do red light cameras. It's not just exclusive to the government.
We have a question letter M from Matariki. Would you increase, decrease or maintain the current number of councillors representative to the population? Are the current wards fit for purpose in your opinion?
When the Maori ward was introduced, there were 13 councillors. And I believe that we should have stayed with that number and had 13 councillors, including the Maori ward councillors, rather than adding two additional seats. I want to add, however, that I don't agree with the proposal that some councillors have made to spend $150,000 during our financial crisis on an early representation review now, when everyone's already budgeted for and scheduled for next year. And I think that's wasteful.
Okay, Danielle, what box number?
18.
Oh, yes, the current voting age.
And we have a question letter V for Very. Many candidates have predetermined absolute positions on some issues. How willing are you to be persuaded to take a different approach by evidence or public feedback?
What number?
Oh, V for Very or Victor, I think you said?
Victor, okay, I've got the wrong slide on the thing on there. Okay.
I can do both.
I've got, I've got a way to fix that.
I've now forgotten the question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, persuading. I'm all for an evidence-based approach. I think there has been a lot of misinformation and disinformation around the council table that has been incredibly concerning. But yeah, if you come to the table with evidence, it's kind of hard to negate that those are experiences or perspectives. And I also want to think of, in terms of public feedback, we really need to bring the most affected people to the decision-making table, rather than making these decisions. And then things happen and then people are pissed off, rightly so, for things that have happened without them even knowing what's going on.
Okay, Marion, what box number?
That went around fast, didn't it? I actually can't see, so I'll let you put it.
And see, I could hardly guess the numbers, but then I could still be, you know, I can't see what they're written from here. And I mean, I'm up to line, was it five on the left and line six on the right for my truck driver's licence.
And we have a question letter C for Cat. Yeah, should the city council lower the voting age to 16 in line with proposals from youth advocates such as Horiiki Waikato MP Hannah Rafiti, Mai P Clark?
Big face. Yes. I think that rangatahi should be involved in decisions that affect their future. So that's the first thing. I think secondly too, it allows them to engage in local government. And yeah, get them engaged and developed in that as well. You know, I think just moreover, it gives them the opportunity to impact decisions that impact them as well, to be involved in local decision-making through voting.
Okay, Donna, what box number?
Number three?
And we've got question letter U for Ua. What is your plan to reduce congestion and vehicle emissions?
Who would you like to defer it to? You get to ask more questions tonight?
I can answer it.
Oh, that works, yeah.
Much of the congestion we currently have in the city has been created by design. Wakakuatahi and Hamilton City Council policy documents have been pretty clear in stating that their intention is to disincentivise people from using their cars. Unlaid bus stops cause congestion. Speed bumps cause congestion. Closing streets and removing car parks create congestion. I'm not sure how many of you saw the video in the Waikato Times where journalists accompanied a fire service crew around the city and experienced firsthand the impact that all of the speed bumps had on their ability to get to an emergency. The first thing I would advocate for in reducing congestion is for council to stop deliberately causing it.
Okay, Maria, what box number?
And we have a question letter P for Porfiri. As a councillor, how would you balance investing in the city with financial prudence?
I'm going to defer, because I do not have the base knowledge of that. I'm going to defer to a fire who has been in this area for a very long time, their chief fire, Donna.
I guess with the issue around uniform rates, it's about investing fairly. It's about investing in our poorer communities, as I've mentioned earlier. It's about upgrading our parks so that our mukupune and our tamariki can call that space theirs. It's about creating, for me, sporting arenas. We have some really flash arenas, but they're not in our community. And we have some excellent up-and-coming sports players. So for me, it's not about investment, it's about equality and equity. And if my rates aren't going to my community, then it's going to their mates' and we've got to sort that out. Kia ora.
Okay, Horianna, what box number?
15.
And it's question letter AA, like double A batteries. What would you do to support and promote arts and culture programmes for young people in our community?
I work in media arts. I was recently part of the Zine Fest. I like to create things. I think it just adds so much value to everybody's lives and gives us opportunity to have a voice. And I'm interested in listening to everyone's voices. And so, you know, I saw Zine Fest as an opportunity to do that. We had workshops, helping anybody in the community to come for free to do that. So I'd love to do that more and more and to be getting in touch with more of our rangatahi at Kira and throughout the community. I know there's heaps of places and spaces that we could do that, like in the community houses.
And just for those who are wondering, we have gone through 25 questions and we have, every single candidate has had five questions each of the box picking. We do have two minutes remaining. So who would like to pick one box number? We'll make it like the hard-hitting style, so all the candidates answer. So what box, what box numbers do we have available? Stacey at home, please pick a number. It was four, five and 11. Stacey said number 11. And I've left the little bits that she said off there into my ear. Because you can probably guess what was said.
And it's question letter I, like for me, I myself.
Ebia?
Would you support calls for the government to provide increased funding to local communities, i.e. by sharing a proportion of GST intake?
Who would like to kick off? Yep. Yeah. All of you, I don't mind who starts off.
I'll start. So yes, I would. I think it would reduce pressure on whanau having to pay extra rates. And everyone pays rates, so it's not just people who own homes. Renters get paid for it as well, but you just see it hidden in the cost of your rental property. And I think, yeah, it supports sustainable Kiri Kiri Rua growth as well.
Who wants to go next?
Yeah, go. Yeah, I mean, this is in line with the local government, New Zealand collective decision that they have been advocating with the government to actually get our GST back so that we can actually use that money instead of whatever government, what's big government wants to do. So yeah, absolutely support it.
Horianna?
Yeah, absolutely, because we've got things like our ageing water infrastructure that desperately needs attention. We're paying $150,000 in interest alone, 100% rates increase, so our people need it. So yes.
Absolutely, housing is a major issue and local government can't do it on their own. A number of years ago, some of our local council housing were demolished and developers actually took over that space. It's a major concern. So working with central government, working with our communities, working with local governments and working with iwi to resolve the housing problem takes a let's all do it together approach.
Okay.
The majority of our challenges stem back to the government, so the government should take responsibility. And why should our everyday citizen get double taxed through income tax, triple tax, income tax, GST and through rates? That is absolutely not fair. The responsibility should lay with government to provide the basic things, at least on a basic level, to support infrastructure, education, schools, roading. That should not be a local government's responsibility.
Thank you for that. Okay, let's go and take a quick break and then we'll come back for hard-hitting questions. Oh, that pesky mute key always keeps causing us problems. Well, we're back and it's time for Hard-Hitting Questions. Okay, and for hard-hitting questions here, these are the questions that all candidates are given to answer, so they cannot use their button cards because they're going to be given an answer, cannot use their defer cards because everyone's given an answer. So let's kick off with hard-hitting question number one. And I better get a random list order sheet, otherwise I would not know exactly which candidate to call off first. Now, very fitting that we're in a Maori world. What is your position on Maori wards and how will you vote in the referendum on Maori wards and why? Let's kick off with Maria.
Why bring something in and then take it away? You have to give it a chance to show that it can work. Maori make up 13% of the population of Aotearoa and also of Kirikiriroa, Hamilton. We need a voice with tangata finua. We need to restore the balance. We need to make sure that it's an even playing field and that there is equity at that table. Out of the 15 councillors that are in council at the moment, including the mayor, there is only one, obviously, Maori tangata finua within that group. Now, that's not equity. We need to keep on, keep hold of the Maori wards and I will be voting to keep them and saying yes to Maori wards.
Okay, Marion.
So yes, I will also be voting in favour of it. So a few things for me. So obviously honours te tariti, especially around the principles of partnership, participation and protection. It ensures equitable representation as well and it restores historical balances where Maori typically have been left out of decision-making, local decision-making. It also ensures that there is Maori voice at the table and that we are representing the views of our unique communities that only we can gain access to. It's also about community cohesion as well, so it does provide a bridging between non-Maori communities as well, just to share what our views are and help them to understand our worldview. And lastly, around diversification of views as well. So we provide a different perspective, actually, in terms of the benefits of Maori wards. So yeah.
Okay, Donna?
Yes, I totoku what's been said. Look, we all fought really, really hard for Maori wards. And if we were to look at te tariti, that's about partnership and partnership is about 50/50. So we're not quite there yet. We're only at two. But hui ono, two is better than none because at least we can see ourselves at the decision-making table. Really, really important to have mana finua there because the decisions made at local council level impact on mana finua, impact on our marae, impact on our waterways. So if we don't have a mana finua, I actually believe mana finua should have their own ward and then maata waka have their ward. So why? Because there are different issues for mana finua than there are for maata waka. So we still have a long way to go, but at least two is a start, is two. Kiala.
Okay, Danielle?
Well, I fear that most of the talking points have been taken, so I will just say totoku. And yes, I think it'd be very odd for me to go against Maori wards, unlike some political parties who want to be in Maori electorates and then get rid of them. But yeah, it's pretty in line with activism that I've done, especially more recently with submissions, even just through me and my mates garnishing about 3,000 people to make their submissions in support of Maori wards. So yeah.
Horianna?
I stood three times at council in support of Maori wards and the need for them. I was there the day that they rejected our korero and on the day that they reversed their decision and created the ward that we are now standing for election in. And so I think it's pretty clear, my position on Maori wards, 100% behind them and how I would vote.
And something to put some context out there, we've had one keyboard warrior who clearly doesn't read bills, told us that Hamilton City Council should stop wasting their money and break the law. Well, they probably didn't think it was breaking the law, but was to not hold the by-election, but to sit there and flatter. Did they not read the Maori ward referendum bill? There's nothing said about stopping Maori wards having by-elections. It simply was the fact it was to put out a racist referendum and also to extend voting periods by two weeks. But it didn't mention about changing anything of the other parts in the rules in there, which is also, if there's a vacancy during a term more than 12 months away, the law states you must have a by-election, you do not have a choice in the matter. And it's only when it comes less than 12 months, councillors get a choice. And well, that can always be interesting depending which council it is. I do remember one in Lahut that went in one direction that ended up with by-election but didn't want one. And in Wellington, they wanted the by-election and didn't end up with one because they felt it was the area of, what do you call it, two-thirds of the ward felt like they weren't represented if you aren't from Hawa, if that's something in there. But that's a bugbear from Wellington. Now, hard-hitting question number two. Oh, this is a goodie. People claim councils need to focus on core business. Would love to know what people's definition of what they call core business, but is there anything I like and nothing I don't like? But the Local Government Act states part of that is to ensure the cultural wellbeing of our community. How do you, no, how do think? I'd love to know how we missed that word on there. How do you think Hamilton City Council can do better performing this function? There's a couple of words missing in there, but Marion, you get to go first.
Kapai. So I think one of, again, the obvious ones is to continue to support Maori wards, ensuring that our voices continue to be included at the table. Secondly, too, that they take a responsibility in educating the whole of Kirikiriroa in terms of the benefits of, so we've already spoken about this, but it is pertinent to this. And that their relationship with iwi and mana finua is not just as a stakeholder but as a treaty partner. So that's for me, a real obvious one. Support of Maori events as well and not just for it to be seen as a cultural thing that sits over there by the side because it lacks, it lacks knowledge of actually the economic benefits that our events bring to the city. Take example, the Ako Conference that's going to be on, you fellows are going to be at that, you know, there's over 850 Maori that will be at that event. Just think about the economic benefits of that. So that's just some of the reasons why.
Okay, Horianna?
Yeah, so a really obvious area to look at is the relationship our mana finua and iwi have with the Waikato River. And so when we went to Hakunui Marae, we had an opportunity to hear from Ngati Waidi about the different things that perhaps council could do. And one of those things was around getting developers to treat stormwater at source. And so when we think about that core business and cultural wellbeing, we can appreciate that doing right by mana finua and iwi can do right by our whole community. And it's an opportunity for our developers to be rewarded for doing the right thing.
Okay, Danielle?
This is great because one of my priorities is to ensure that Hepo Manawa Order, the council's Maori strategy, is not put on the chopping block because every single time some cut has been needed to be made, it's usually Hepo Manawa Order that's been at the forefront of that. And that's how we keep our city rich with the culture of the good and the bad, the things that have happened in this, yeah, in this tour here. So yeah, making sure that we actually keep investing in Hepo Manawa Order and make sure it's always in the forefront of our minds when we make our decisions.
Maria?
Leading on from what Danielle said, there are three things I'd like to speak about and that is Hepo Manawa Order, which is our strategic document that was done in partnership with our tangata finua reps and our council as well. And those po pillars are our touchstones, they are our values, they are our pukinga, pumano, our qualities, our strengths and our skills that we have as a collective to be able to move forward and paddle together, make sure that our waka, our canoe stays straight. The second one is Te Fari Tapafa. Te Fari Tapafa, created by Dr Sir Mason Juri, addresses all sides of our being, the cultural, the physical, the spiritual, the mental and the importance of whanau family. Now, if one pearl, one pillar of our fari is shaky, then our whole house is going to fall down. So it's not just So it's not just our cultural that we need to address, it's those all four, five beings. And the one I'd like to add to the farri tapafa to make it taparima, which is the pautoko manoa, is the tā'au, the environment.
Okay, Donna.
For me, it's really important that the resources are spent in our communities. Like I've said, I've been in Kirikiriroa for 30 years and there's been a lack of spend. So if council is serious about, about our community, they need to be serious about investment. I'm also part of Maori Women's Welfare League and we have our national conference here. And I think council needs to engage in those organisations. Maori Women Welfare League are about looking after our wahine and looking after tamareki. So it's a real privilege to be part of that ko papa as well. And I still believe that mana finua need their own seat around the table.
Thank you. Now let's get to the hard-hitting question number three. And this is very hot off the press. This week, well, it might have actually been last week when it happened. This week, the government decided to ignore all recommendations from the recent Future of Local Government Report, which includes recommendations for even more Maori interaction with council. How do you think council can move forward to bring in more tā'au Maori to governance? Let's kick off with Maria.
This question for me is similar to the last question. It's all about values that are good for everybody. There is a koorero coined by Bentham O'Her, what's good for Maori is good for everybody. So we are here, yes, for the Maori ward, but we are here for everybody and moving Kirikiriroa forward together as one. And tā'au Maori tonight is an example of how we could do things better to ensure that we acknowledge everybody in the room, that we open up with a karakia. Karakia is important because it sets our intentions. It doesn't discriminate, it doesn't affiliate to a certain denomination. It brings us all centre focused in the present and the moment and it acknowledges everybody here. So there's some, there's some real basic things that we can do from tā'au Maori that we can bring into the, to government. That's not just Maori focused, it's indigenous focused. It's what tangata finua around the world do. And we need to be careful how we use the terms mana finua and tangata finua. I'd like us to adopt the koorero mana finua because mana finua is about law and who owns the land legally.
Okay, Horianna.
Council's, council's spending the bare minimum to let whanau Maori know that we have a by-election happening, $1,000, but we carry on. Council decided to establish a Maori ward because it recognised the value of it. Like te iwi Maori, like our tupuna, we just have to carry on. We do what we can with what we have and let celebrations like mahtariki prove that what is good for Maori, i.e. being represented at council, is good for everyone.
Danielle.
I think it's really important that council needs to look at their joint management agreements with mana finua, with tangata finua alike, because a lot of those committees are subcommittees. They're not even at the forefront of full council meetings. And if we were to, again, kind of take seriously the different thoughts and perspectives that mana finua have in alignment with treaty settlements, it's important that they actually get a seat at the full council table, not just to the side as, as an aspiration. So I think it would be really good to, yeah, see more work done in the joint management agreement space.
Marion.
Yeah, I support everything that everyone has said. And I think, yeah, like Maria said, it's very similar to the, to the first partai that was asked. I think one of the things that I would add is to make sure that, just a couple of things, make sure that our policies are reflective as well. I'd love council to ignore the government, but anyway, that's a whole nother question, a whole nother ko papa. But, and the other thing is just to hepo manoa order. Sometimes what can happen, my experience in the iwi spaces, our strategies are put there as a little brown strategy off on the corner. And what makes the difference is to actually ground the mahi of council inside of the strategy and not have it be a ticked box or an isolated strategy, but have it actually inform what's coming out of there. So it really does add value again. So I think that's a practical way. And two, with the, it comes back to making sure that iwi and mana finua is treated as treaty partners, not just. So it's very decision-making based, it's what actually brought this to the table. So you just see the effectiveness of them.
Okay, Donna.
Gosh, there's such a lot in that one question. I was co-author for the treaty courses for Auckland Council and what was important about being part of that process is you went out to mana finua and you also went out to mātā waka. And, and I guess being part of your strategic council plan is important because then it's got mana and it's got teeth. In regards to policies, I've worked with inside councils as well and they've become a strategic plan that can either be implemented or ignored. And so putting them up in, into our, our local government plans, be that district plan, city plan or other standards, government standard plans where, where you have to implement certain policies. If we don't have them at that higher level, then. And also for me, just before I finish, again, it's about where the money is spent. And if the money's not spent in our communities, then our communities are not going to participate. You start investing in our communities, and our communities will start investing in their community.
Now, we don't normally do this, but I've had three questions pinned on here. Two of them I actually think were answered by questions that were actually in the boxes. But one of them is about free waters. Thank you, Stacey, for putting it up. Okay, so the question from Edward is, I'm not sure if this is a, however, would any candidate support free waters if it was ever presented again? Let's kick off with Maria.
Look, Nanaia Mahuta, who is one of our most longstanding ministers in parliament, put in a lot of hard work getting free waters reform over the line and got the mandate and the agreement and people on board to support free waters reform. And then in an instant, it got taken away. As a result of the free waters reform, while we still had it, temana o te wa fell out of that, where we had to have a national objection for fresh water. Hea te meenu o tā'au, he wai, he wai, he wai. It is water, without water, you have nothing. So we, water is the biggest commodity that we have and the three waters framework was the, the most researched, well-presented, well-socialised strategy that we have had to date. So yes, I would support it 100%.
Donna.
For me, it's about localism and it's local communities, it's our marae. Our marae knows exactly what's happening around their finua, around their wa. We come from Tipuahau Waikato, so our tupuna is, is, is a priority for us. And we want mana finua. So I'm secretary for Huakina Marae Forum and, and it is about looking after our tupuna. And those marae that are on the awa know exactly what's happening on the awa in that space. For me, it's about dealing with the issue at a local level.
Okay, Marion.
Yeah, so I definitely would, would have supported it and would support it too if it came up again. Yeah, Nanaia's well researched, well informed on it and she fought hard for it and it was a really practical solution for some of our water infrastructure issues that we're, we're dealing with and will continue to deal with because that's no longer on the table. And I think to talk to the point too about mana finua being involved in, in, in the management of wa as well, that's why it was a really good model as well is because it was a co-governance model. And, you know, that's why it also worked because it, it included the voices of community and mana finua and the decisions that, that impact their wa. So that's another reason why I would be totally supportive of it.
Danielle.
Yes, I would and did support three waters. It's really upsetting now that we talk about how much everything is costing now and now we have to take, front the bill for all the water infrastructure. So it would have been really great to have that support from central government, but now we have to bite the bullet and increase rates just to be able to have clean water and our sewage not going into the river and all those really important things. Yeah, so it's really been upsetting to see the decision change.
Horianna.
Yeah, I, like Danielle was talking about, our fiscal situation right now has everything to do with our three waters situation. And so hindsight lets us know that actually we should have all been 100% what's good for Maori is good for everyone and appreciated that then and there and gotten behind the three waters.
Thank you. Now let's go for a lighter question before we get to closing statements. I run a coffee cart called Bean Here, it sells coffee. If you were to come to Bean Here, what type of coffee you would buy? Horianna, would you like to kick off?
Same as earlier this year, hot chocolate.
Danielle.
Because coffee cats sometimes don't do this, do you do iced coffees?
Yes.
I would have an iced americano with a splash of caramel.
Marion.
Coconut latte.
Oh, heck, you, you, you won't take a seat over here? Donna?
I'm a herbal tea girl myself.
Maria?
I'm the same as self, I have peppermint tea. However, I, I am a bit partial to a caramel latte with oat milk too.
You join me on this side, peppermint tea is probably the tea I always have in Auntie Susie's. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, no, okay, well, that's interesting. On our way up, we stopped at Jailhouse Coffee in Waurua. I had, both Nick and I had coconut mockers. So just to put some, so if you're in Waurua, on your way to and from South Waurua for this area or for us North Waurua, go see my friend Linda at Jailhouse Coffee. It's a little bit closer than trying to see me at Bean Here, which I will be on Saturday morning at Newtown Market. And fingers crossed, the governor general could walk down and get a coffee from Government House because that's, I probably would be, oh, no, the hospital actually will be the closest one for the coffee if she walked out, walked out the back gate. But yeah, effectively, yeah, I'll, I'll probably give you the decent coffee though. Yeah. Okay, so it gets to the final part of the show, closing statements. And was it each candidate gets one minute on why they should get their number one, why you, the voter, should give them their number one preference vote? Horianna, you get to go first.
Kia ora ete whanau, ko Horianna Henderson, tauku ingwa. And I'm asking for your number one vote for the Kirikiriroa Maori ward. My whanau live here, I grew up here, I love the city, I care about it and I want to serve our community. I know I can do that, I love te tiriti, I care about our city's fiscal situation and I care about the wellbeing of our people. And I'm asking our whanau to get out there and vote, it's so important. We hekoi, we protest. At first, we were denied a Maori ward, we had to go fight for it, they heard the value of it. Now it's time for us to prove the value of it and to just make our vote. Ko Horianna Henderson, tauku ingwa, your number one candidate for Kirikiriroa Maori ward.
Okay, Donna.
Oh, kia ora amo ete whanau, kia ora tefari. For me, it's really about who can hit the ground running. I've worked in local government. I understand the process, I understand what's required. And I've shared before that it's really important to, to look at the policies, to look at the regulations that are coming down and making sure that you understand, not just to discern what's going to happen, but the impact that actually is going to happen on our people. I'm not afraid to stand, I'm not afraid to speak. It takes courage to actually stand for your local government. It's not an easy thing for us to do, but we're all advocates, we advocate for our whanau. You've got a really amazing choices here. So you're not going to go wrong. Who are you going to choose for? I'm just going to say, choose me as your number one. I've got that auntie factor. And sometimes you need to have those aunties in the house.
Danielle.
Kia ora. I hope that through these partai and my answers that it's kind of articulated my values and where I stand on really important issues that are happening for our whanau and for our hapurri. I have three priorities. The first is obviously to honour te tiriti and that is specifically through hepo manoa order, which I spoke about earlier today. My second is future-proofing our infrastructure, climate changes here. And we need to make sure that every single time it hits winter and we get mass amount of flooding, that it doesn't actually happen. And lastly, I want to ensure that rangatahi have a city that they feel seen in and they feel like they're being heard. So I want to see a targeted engagement strategy for our rangatahi, for our Maori whanau and for any other marginalised communities on all citywide proposals. I'm young, I'm ready to hit the ground running. I've been involved in local government for what feels like a long time, it's only been six years. So I'd really love your number one vote this election. Kia ora.
Okay, Maria.
Kote amorangi kimua, kote hapai o kimuri, kote tuturu tanga mahipono, ote mana Maori motu hake. Simply translated, to lead is to serve and to serve is to lead. And that whakataoki was one whakataoki that my grandfather, te kena na wieteta, huata, was an advocate for. Whether I am in front, whether I am in back, side to side, I'm here to serve and to lead when the reason calls. My tupuna, my ancestors brought me here, so who am I to say no to them? I need to be a good ancestor, a good tupuna, I also need to be a good mokopuna for the legacy that my grandparents, wieteta huata, heninga kai iba o tumona, on my kahu nganu side, who lived in this town for a very, very long time and served across the district. It's said that my grandfather either married you or buried you. Also, my tupuna on my mother's side, Eric and Charlotte Pippish, who helped to build Kirikiriroa Marae, Hui Te Rangiora Marae and Puri Kiriki Marae. My blood runs deep in. And all around.
Okay, and Marion.
Kia ora amo ete whanau. So for me, you know, I shared my opening statement, so I won't repeat that. But I, I think what's there for me, you can't go wrong with all, with all of the marae kura here as well. We've, we've been spoilt for choice. I think the thing for me and why I stepped up, because I had to ask myself, how could I be effective in making a difference? So first thing for me is reliability. So I will turn up to the hui, respect as well and respect and recognition for our mana finua, our iwi and our diverse mātā waka family as well, making sure that their voices are included. The other thing is the relatedness. I'm really keen on speaking simple language to our whanau throughout this period so that they can actually connect to the importance of council, what it is and why it's important for them to vote as well. That's the ko papa of Maori wards. And also big on relationships as well. So I've worked in these spaces with councils and been effective at. So I think it's important that moving forward, we're building relationships with council members and our community so that they're in support of Maori wards and how Maori can benefit the whole of Kirikiriroa.
Thank you. Okay, and just a little bit of housekeeping. When it comes to voting, remember you're using the voting system, single transferable vote. And on this situation, there is a single vacancy. I've got to get it right because this council has more, doesn't have single member wards. But whoever is going to win this by-election will have at least 50% of the vote plus one. So when it comes to your voting paper, don't just think about who your number one vote is going to go for, but also who your number two, your number three, your number four, and you can go all the way up to eight. So you can actually work out to sit there and do it. Because the thing is, with single transferable vote, when the bottom, when there isn't enough to get to 50%, the bottom candidate is eliminated and their second preference votes are redistributed and that keeps that process going until the final iteration where the winner has 50% of the vote plus one. Now, some interesting factors to look at, the 2019 local body elections in Wellington, Justin Lester, lost the election on that last iteration thanks to second preference votes from other, who went to other candidates first, that made Andy Fosco on top. So just remember, you know, second, third, fourth preference votes are just as important as that number one. But make sure you put the number one on the ballot paper, otherwise the machine does not read it as a valid vote. That is something I always will sit there and say there. Now, if any of yous have been watching on here, it's in the ballot, is an independent nonprofit that is based on, mainly funded from its members, but small dollar donations do help. If you are on, online, you can head to our website, it'sintheballot.nz and click on the donation section, there's QR codes. and click on the donations section. There is QR codes sitting on our screen up there that takes you to our Give a Little page. And if you're in studio here, we do, we don't mind taking cash, which is king. Or my coffee cart, Bean Here, does have an EPOS machine here. So yes, if you want to on, on that one there. And just for those who may have been watching from different parts of the country but like our content, this Saturday and Sunday, Tooraga City Council's local body elections will be rerunning all the episodes that we had on Saturday and Sunday. If you want to wait for the Mural debate, it's 7pm Sunday night. But their polling closes in two Saturdays' time. So if you're in that area, make sure you get your ballot papers in. And for here, voting starts, it's Tuesday next week? Yes, yep. And yeah, and make sure when you get your voting papers, get out there. If you're unsure, tune into It's in the Ballot. We can sit down there and provide you some very candidates with their, you know, opinions. I believe there's also another, Mick Kennedy's also did a live stream as well. I, Glenview, yeah, yeah. Oh, oh, that hasn't happened yet. Okay, yeah, okay, yep. No, no, no. It's, yeah, so, you know, look at all these tools out there, you know. As I say, don't just watch It's in the Ballot. There are other options out there. Look at them as well, you know. You never know what you'll find out. What gets asked on here might not be asked elsewhere. So doing that. So from here at the It's in the Ballot Skeleton Team, as we can sit there and call it. Nick, you've done a very good job tonight doing two jobs. It's quite intriguing just watching it and it worked brilliantly. And thank you to Stacey, who's been doing all our remote editing from Wellington. Thank you so much for sitting there doing this. And yeah, it's quite scary that we've managed to pull this off effectively with a core team of three. And thank you, Mata Diki, for stepping in as our question host tonight to sit there and do that as my arms can't quite reach that table over there and I don't quite want to look like a mad, mad person running up and down the stage all night long. So, yeah. So yes, from us, have a good evening. And if you're on Saturday, we look forward to watching you, watching the live stream. Thanks for that and good night.